Play that back.
Replay. I've never had it happen. I've heard of it happening in other cities, just never.
They just didn't publish our notice?
Okay, it is six o'clock and we are going to bring our May 12 city council meeting to order and we will begin with a roll call, please.
Sarchet?
Here.
Savage?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Otis?
Here.
Item number three is approval of agenda. I'll ask for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Item number four is public hearings. It's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. Jenny, when was the notice published?
May 2nd.
Have we had any written comments for or against the proposed budget?
No, sir.
So at this time, we'll have a staff report.
Good evening, everyone. So for the second time, I'm proud to present the community of Polk City, the fiscal year 2026 budget. The budget outlines revenue and expenses received during our fiscal year, which begins July 1 of 2025 and ends June 30, 2026. I want to take an opportunity to thank the city staff and the city council and mayor for your hard work and your time commitment on the budget and just acknowledge how much your hard work or how much work goes into the proposed budget. So thank you for the time and the dedication. Okay, so the fiscal year 2026 budget is a balanced budget. Total revenue of the 26 budget is $21,362,948 and total expenses of $23,230,311. Of that $23 million budget, the total capital project budget is just shy of $11 million and the city's operating budget is the remaining $12.25 million. The city's largest operating expense is salary and benefits, which equals $4.38 million. So this next slide is a breakdown of the city's expenses of that $12.25 million operating budget. You have enterprise expenses, which accounts for the highest percentage of 36%. Enterprise expenses include water, sanitary sewer storm, sewer, garbage, and recycling expenses for a grand total of $4.5 million. The city's public safety expenses is the second largest expense, accounting for 24% of the city's operating budget for a total of $2.9 million. Debt service is the city's debt payments or debt obligations and that total equals $1.4 million. Community and economic development accounts for $1.1 million. Culture and recreation total is $1 million. Public works expenses, this is specific to roads and streets, is $800,000. And general government accounts for $600,000. Excuse me. So the city has a number of different revenue sources, which include in order from largest to smallest, charges for fees and services, other financing sources, property taxes, intergovernmental revenues, tax increment financing, known as TIF, other city taxes, use of money and property licenses and permits, and miscellaneous round out the city's revenue sources for the city of Polk City. The proposed levy rate for the fiscal year 2026 budget is $11 per 1,000 assessed, which is unchanged from the current fiscal year. Here's a comparison of property tax levy rates across the Des Moines metro. The average rate is $12.29 per 1,000 assessed. And as you can see, the city of Polk City is below that average amount. We are constructing a number of large capital projects in fiscal year 26. Those capital projects include the Water Tower project and Central Iowa Water Works buy-in, the Trail project, this is the Polk City Junction Trail and the Trailhead project, Northside Drive realignment project in phase one of the Polk City Junction Trail, sump pump collector project, and Northeast 7th Street construction in phase three of the Polk City Junction Trail. The fiscal year 26 budget includes some capital equipment as well as some studies that are prioritized in the budget. We will plan to purchase a police vehicle, a fire engine, and a public works dump truck are all public or all equipment that will be replaced next year. In addition, the city will be doing a third street corridor study project. City staff additions for 26. The city of Polk City currently employs 31 full-time positions and approximately 50 part-time positions. We will be adding two new full-time positions in fiscal year 2026. That would include a parks coordinator, which will be a full-time position, as well as a full-time police officer position. And the budget does align with the city staffing plan, which is available online for our residents to view, and we are not proposing an increase to the city's tax levy to fund either of those positions. Any questions tonight? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed budget? I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And roll call.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
I then need a motion to approve Resolution 2025-31A, adopting the fiscal year 2026 budget. Motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Real quick.
Yeah.
So we're going through this again because of the publication issue, correct?
Correct.
Do you want to outline that just a little bit?
Yes. So the budget is due the end of April for the upcoming fiscal year. The newspaper that the city uses for publications published the wrong public notice. So we were given a one-time extension from the state of Iowa to republish the notice and hold a new public hearing.
It's your no fault of on our end?
Correct.
It was a publication?
Error.
Or whatever you want. Okay. So, thank you.
Jenny, did we do roll call on that?
Nope.
Let's do that.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
So moving on then to public hearing 4B, it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed amendment to the FY 2020 through 2025 capital improvement plan. When was the notice published, Jenny?
May 2nd.
Have we had any written comments for or against the proposed CIP amendment?
No, sir.
Do we have a staff report?
I do have a staff report. Thank you, Mayor. The city of Polk City has a current five-year CIP, which includes all city projects that were to be constructed between fiscal years 2021 and 2025. The five-year CIP was approved by the city council on September 14, 2020 and has been amended twice. The CIP needs to be amended a third time and the amendment includes the following projects. The West Bridge Trail Parker to Neil Smith project, also known as Phase 7 of the Polk City Junction Trail. The cost of this project has increased from the original cost. The new cost estimate is $222,000. The council will be considering awarding this project tonight as well. The sump pump collector project, the cost for this project has also increased. The new cost estimate is $401,000. TCI lift station upgrades. This project remains in the city's plan but is being moved to the future CIP. So just a note, the two lift stations in Polk City will continue to be monitored, but at this time, we do not think or we do not believe that improvements need to be made to this pump station. North Broadway sidewalks, this project will remain in the city's plan but is being moved to the future CIP. Van Dorn and Third Street improvements project, this project is being removed from the CIP. The city council has discussed the possibility of revisiting this project after the town square master plan is completed. East Broadway Street improvements, this project is being removed from the CIP. Some components of this project will be constructed with the Polk City Junction Trail Phase 4. Regional Park Facility, the cost for this project is is being updated. The project will remain in the city's CIP with an updated cost. South Third Street Trail Extension, this project needs to be added to the CIP and this project has been completed and was in the current fiscal year 2025 budget. So within the next few days, we will have a new CIP document available on the city's website, which will include all of the city projects completed over the past five-year period. I will send that out after the amendment for tonight is completed. Just a note too for the council, moving forward, we're going to adjust how we do our CIP planning a little bit. The council does also have a completed fiscal year 2026 to 2030 CIP and we will begin discussing a potential amendment to that plan after July 1. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Okay, is there anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed CIP amendment? I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
And a roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
I then need a motion to approve Resolution 2025-53, approving the FY 2020 through 2025 CIP amendment. Motion? Second?
Second.
Anything else, council? Roll call.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Moving on to public hearing 4C, it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for Polk City Junction Trail Phase 7 project. Jenny, when was the notice published?
May 2nd.
We had any written comments received for or against the proposed project?
No, sir.
At this time, we would have staff report, which is Travis.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Tonight, for your consideration, are the project documents as well as a report of bids for the Polk City Junction Trail Phase 7 project. On Tuesday, May 6, staff and Snyder and Associates conducted what we consider a very successful bid opening for this project. It produced nine qualified responsive bidders. Those bids ranged from the low, the apparent low bid of $148,575 to the high bid of $205,945. The apparent low bidder was Brothers Cleaning Corporation, doing business as Brothers Concrete from Des Moines, with that low bid of $148,575. That low bid is approximately $1,500 lower than the engineer's estimate of $150,129.50. Brothers Concrete has successfully completed work in Polk City, including the 2023 Street Repairs Project, the 2024 Street Repairs Project. They have completed 95% of the work on the South Third Street Trail Extension Project. We're just waiting on grass to grow and a few minor repairs to be done as part of the punch list operation on that project, but we view that project as a success as well. As well as Brothers Cleaning has become the Polk City Public Works go-to contractor for emergency repairs here in the community. We feel that Brothers Cleaning Corporation, doing business as Brothers Concrete, can fulfill the obligations of the contract. We believe they're qualified and we would recommend acceptance of that apparent low bid and award of the contract to Brothers Cleaning Corporation. As part of this, because of the timing of where the meetings fell in May, if you were to award the contract, we would then provide that contract to the contractor tomorrow with the intent of bringing it back for accepting of that contract at the next council meeting. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anything of Travis?
Do we have any grant funding with this section or is this all?
This is all local funding.
Any other questions? All right then. Anyone present who would, thank you Travis, anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed project? Then I need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Moving on then, I need a motion to approve Resolution 2025-54, adopting the plans. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Then I need also for 4C 2, a motion to approve Resolution 2025-55, awarding the contract. Motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. And roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And we will now move on to item number five, which is the pinning ceremony for Tanner Owen Deputy Chief Promotion.
Evening, Mayor and Council. It is with my great honor to announce the promotion of Tanner Owen to the position of Deputy Chief of the Polk City Fire Department. Come up, Tanner. Tanner has demonstrated unwavering commitment, integrity, and leadership throughout his four years of service to the Polk City Fire Department. He has served as lieutenant for one year and a captain for two years. Deputy Chief Owen is a leader who brings not only experience and professionalism, but a deep personal commitment to our city by also being a resident. To Tanner's family, thank you. You have made countless sacrifices so that he could respond to the call, day or night, holiday or weekend. Your support has helped make this achievement possible and you share in this moment as well. At this time, I would like to invite Tanner's wife, Katie, to come forward and pin the badge of Deputy Chief.
That is a long pin.
Got to get it just right. This badge represents more than a title. It symbolizes commitment, sacrifice, leadership, and unwavering service to others. Deputy Chief Owen, on behalf of the Polk City Fire Department, congratulations. May you wear this badge with pride and continue to lead with strength, humility, and excellence that brought you here today.
Congratulations. Our congratulations Deputy Chief to you, your wife, your entire family. It's so nice to see so many people here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
So we will move on to item number six, which is public comments. This is a time and place for comments for any item other than those that are a public hearing. Jenny, have we received any cards?
No, sir.
Are, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak during the public comment period? I thought they were all getting up. So moving on to item seven then, consent items. I'll ask for a motion and a second on consent items.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
We'll move on to item eight, which is business items. We have a number of those ahead of us tonight. Item A is Sunrise Ridge. We need a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2025-61, the development agreement. And I would need a motion and a second on that, please.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any comment from council? Then we will ask for roll call.
Savage?
I made the motion.
I'm sorry, Walters?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Moving on to item two then, Resolution 2025-62, approving construction drawings. Last for a motion and a second?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And is there any comment from council? Roll call then.
Were there any recommendations or comments from staff regarding the, this development? So for council's consideration tonight is a, you've already approved the agreement to complete, which illustrates the sanitary sewer hookup fees and the future improvements of East Northside Drive or East North South, East Northside Drive. Slow down. To bring it into conformance of Polk City standards, on the construction drawings, as part of that approval, the developers, engineer, and the developer are requesting a waiver of Polk City requirements in that your code requires them to meet the preferred standards for the SUDAS design specifications. In reviewing their documents, because of the topography of this plot of land, they are proposing a sharper curve near an intersection, which if they were to alter it to have an, the compliant curve, it would either impact the drainage and stormwater functionality of this development or require a steeper running slope of a street, which is less desirable. So our recommendation is to approve that waiver as well as approve the construction drawings for this development.
Sorry, which intersection are we talking about?
We refer to it by Station. It's one of the local ones. It's Station 64-ish. Do you know which intersection?
Yes, it's an internal intersection. It's not a lot of a percent grid.
Yep.
Daybreak and 14th.
Okay, so Daybreak and 14th is near, is where that intersection is near.
Jenny, I think we're to roll call, aren't we?
Correct. Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Moving on to item B, Resolution 2025-63, approving agreement to complete and final plat for Antler Ridge Plat 1. Motion and a second? Well, I thought we'd do motion and a second and then we get any comments from him.
Don't we normally do the presentation before?
Go ahead.
So for council's consideration tonight is an agreement to complete and final plat for Antler Ridge Plat 1. This is the, the first development in a property that is located south of the gravel portion, well, partially gravel portion now, of East Southside Drive and west of Northwest 44th Street, near Highway 415. This subdivision or this plot, final plat includes 30 single-family lots, but also includes the remainder of the Antler Ridge subdivision, placed in outlots as, or broken up based on their future or their, their current zoning. So the idea being is that as that continues to develop, the final plats would include less land in the future and those are unbuildable outlots based on the future zoning or the future uses of those properties. The final plat also includes four unbuildable outlots for floodplain management that will be permanently tied to the adjacent property. As part of this, the public improvements are not quite finished. We're awaiting some grass establishment as well as a handful of other improvements as well as final provision of some legal documents associated with the final plat. So council's approval tonight is subject to several items and I will read those out for you, just so you guys are aware. So approval of the associated agreement to complete, which we've combined into a single resolution. Building permits for this final plat shall not be issued until such time the public improvements are ready to be accepted. This is particularly important because one of the outstanding punch list items is a hydrant, a proposed hydrant around, along East Southside Drive, without which several of the lots do not achieve full hydrant coverage. The developers, engineer will be providing updated record drawings following completion of the public improvements. There were some outstanding sidewalk ramps as well as that hydrant I mentioned that will need to be included on, included on the record drawings. And then payment of those fees as well as repair of any damages that may occur as the remaining punch list items are addressed. This is a pretty standard practice for the council to approve this agreement to complete and give us the flexibility of allowing or getting the legal documents cleaned up and letting the final plat be recorded prior to your next meeting at the end of May. And then we would probably consider acceptance of a public improvement, acceptance of the public improvements here shortly. It's our understanding that the developers contractor will complete those items in pretty short order here. Be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
So I think there was a concern brought up around the drainage and construction work to a neighboring property. Do we?
That's.
Resolution there yet?
So that is part of Antler Ridge Plat 3. As part of that, we've discussed that with the developers, engineer, and we are going to extend the riprap to better armor the discharge point of that, of that outlet. In reviewing the existing site conditions, it's our understanding that the existing reel, reeling or like the, the eroding of that surface is in an undesirable location. And so we're going to extend that riprap to better protect the outlet of that structure.
Okay. We could get back to.
Correct.
Okay.
Jenny?
We need a motion and a second, sir.
We need a motion and a second.
So moved, second.
Anything else of Travis? Then we'll have a roll call, please.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Item C is Resolution 2025-66, authorizing the amendment to the intergovernmental agreement for the promotion of tourism and convention activities in the greater Des Moines area. Chelsea, do you have something to say about this?
I do. I will provide a report. For consideration tonight is an amended 28E agreement between the CVB and also known as Catch Des Moines and the 15-member government agencies. The proposed changes for the agreement are specific to changing the funding allocation. Currently, Polk City pays two sevens, or two of seven cents of the city's hotel motel tax to CVB. Due to recent state of Iowa property tax legislation, the 15-member governments have proposed amending the funding allocation to 25% of the city's hotel motel tax for the CVB. This would be approximately a 3.5% reduction. Does anybody have any questions on the amended 28E agreement?
Motion to approve.
A second? A second?
Second.
This does not count as a second. Oh, I thought you were doing, I thought you were doing thumbs up to me. So, roll call then.
Walters?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Let's move on to item D then, Resolution 2025-67, authorizing amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with Bravo Greater Des Moines for the benefit of the cultural community. Chelsea, and you have report?
Yes, so we have a second amended 28E agreement tonight, and this one is between Bravo Greater Des Moines and the city of Polk City. The proposed changes for this agreement are specific again to the funding allocation. Currently, the city of Polk City pays two of seven cents of the city's hotel motel tax to Bravo. The proposed changes to this agreement are the same, amending the funding allocation to 25% of the city's hotel motel tax for Bravo. This would be approximately a 3.5% reduction to Bravo. Does anybody have any questions on the changes to this agreement?
If none, motion and a second, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Moving on to item E then, second reading of ordinance 2025-500, amending Chapter 63, Speed Regulations, Section 63.04, Special Speed Restrictions on East, East Southside Drive. I don't think we have a report on. I don't think we have a report on this, so I'll just ask for a motion and then a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Anything from council? Roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Item E1 is optional to waive the third reading. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Item F is Second Reading of Ordinance 2025-300, Amending Chapter 92, Water Rates, Section 92.02, Rates for Service. Can I have a motion and then a second?
So moved.
Second.
From council? Then we will ask for roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Moving on to item G, Second Reading of Ordinance 2025-400, Amending Chapter 99, Sewer Service Charges, Section 99.01. Ask for a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Anything from council? Roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
And finally, item H, Snyder and Associates Invoice in the Amount of $47,334.25 for March 2025 Engineering Services. A motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Second.
We have two proclamations in front of us. I, Steve Carjun, Mayor, Polk City, Iowa, in recognition of this event, which is EMS Week, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18 through May 24, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week. The 51st anniversary of EMS Week's theme is "We Care for Everyone." I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities in honor of the EMS profession and the essential service it provides. And then the second one is, second proclamation is I, Steve Carjun, Mayor, Polk City, Iowa, do hereby designate the week of May 18 through 24, 2025, as National Public Works Week in Polk City, and I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contribution they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. Moving on then to item number 10, Reports and Particulars. Do we have anything from staff? Yes, chief?
I just want to announce, next Tuesday, the 20th, the Fire Department is doing Papa's Pizza Delivery from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So just call and order and ask for a delivery from the Fire Department, and all tips go to the Fire Fighters Association.
Any other staff?
Yes, actually, this Saturday, we have our cops.
Okay. All right. Okay then, we will move on to council. Actually, let's move on to Chelsea first.
I don't have anything. Thank you, Mayor.
Council?
Just extend congratulations to Deputy Chief Owen. I don't know him very well, but I've heard very good things and certainly trust chief's judgment, so glad to see that. And then, sorry to have missed Udonis' retirement ceremony last Friday, but heard good things there too, so congratulations for, different reasons, but equal congratulations on that.
Anyone else? Okay, and I don't have anything to add, so we will move on to item 11. For those in attendance, this is where we move into closed session, which is for council members only. And we will need a motion and a second to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?[1794.80]